Okay, it's 6:30. We're gonna bring the meeting to order. I can't tell everybody how happy I am to see some like live faces, you know? I'm zoomed out, I can tell you, after about eighteen months of zoom now, or fifteen months of zoom. I think I've had all the zoom I can take. So I'm very happy that, you know, we've got a little distancing going on, but at least everybody's here in person. So I welcome everyone who decided to come out tonight, so thank you. Mauricio, would you like to call the roll?
Yes, Mayor. Commissioner Goldman?
Here.
Commissioner Lama?
Here.
Commissioner Viscara?
Here.
Vice Mayor Sfetchen?
Here.
Mayor Shaw?
Here.
All members present.
Okay, excellent. Let's stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good, thank you. Okay, Father Damien, we are ready for you. This is Father Damien Flanagan is here.
Good evening, everybody. As we now gather together this evening, we place ourselves in the presence of our wise and loving Creator. We say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. To thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health. We need to fulfill our callings for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you and the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so by their boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures, you have shared that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Let us now bless our mayor for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. We ask that you graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and rightness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. We pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you, what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Sunny Isles Beach. It is in your blessed name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Father. Last week, there was a terrible tragedy in Royal Palm Beach that affected a member of the city that we all know very well. The family invoked Marcy's laws. I'm not gonna name the name, but I'd like to have a moment of silence for him. And it just, it was, I think, most everybody read about it, you know, in the news. And it was horrific. And, you know, our heart goes out to the rest of the family and certainly to the member of our team. So just, we'll have a brief moment of silence. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. We'll move on with the agenda. We've got minutes from the May 20th meeting. The hybrid meeting, hopefully the last hybrid meeting. So Mauricio, do I hear a motion to approve those minutes? Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved. Okay. I've got my opening statement. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome and thank you for being here tonight. Please turn off or mute any electronic devices to avoid interrupting these proceedings. In all issues that may come before this city commission, we ask that everyone show mutual respect for one another by listening quietly to each person speaking and that everyone refrain from any clapping, heckling, or verbal outbursts in favor or in opposition to a speaker. Individuals that do not adhere to Chapter 74 Rules of Procedure of the Code, particularly 7421 decorum, shall be barred from further appearance before the commission. Individuals who want to speak on the item on the agenda are asked to fill out a public speaker card and give it to the city clerk before the item is called. Speakers are asked to speak to the issues, make comments concise and to the point, and refrain from making duplicate comments. All speakers will be limited to three minutes. If you speak out of turn without permission from the chair, or if you don't see speaking after one warning, you'll be escorted out of the chambers. We have one change to tonight's agenda. Item 6A zoning application for May 3 development has been deferred. Do I hear a motion to approve these changes?
Some.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. Thank you. And...
Mayors, may I ask if this is deferred until the next meeting?
Was that, I have the...
That's what the...
It said we understand the next available commission hearing, which we understand is July 15.
All right, that's only twenty-eight days from now, so that they don't have to re-notice it according to our code.
Understood. Okay, thank you for the clarification. Yeah, but I have a letter here addressed to Claudia yesterday requesting the deferral. So, and it says till the next meeting, July 15. Okay, excellent. Thank you, Ed. And, okay. Update on tourism. The legendary Mr. Bill Talbert is here. And, you know, he already led us in the pledge, so...
Yeah, and I didn't screw up any of the words either, so, thank you. By the way, you all have faces and it's beautiful. And welcome back to Face to Face. I want all your viewers, aye, that I have my vaccine proudly. I've had it. And when I got my vaccine, I sent an email to all my staff. I didn't say get it, I said I got it. So, thank you, Mayor.
Voila!
Thank you, Mayor. That one looks like mine.
See, that's right.
Oh, no.
I guess you got them off the same website, right?
Yeah. Thank you. You know, a year ago, this is the reason we're all here. A year ago, we didn't know if we're gonna live or die. We didn't know if we were gonna live or die. And they said a vaccine would be in '24 or whatever. So, and as soon as this came out, places like Sunny Isles Beach started to take up for hospitality. I will tell you, today, tourism here exceeds 2019 levels. 2019. Resort tax collections in April exceeded tax collections in '19. Now, that's without international business, without meetings and conventions, and without the cruising. So can you imagine what's gonna happen, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Manager? Thank you. Good to see you. This manager attends our Community Image Advisory Boards, Neat Streets Miami, and has been a number of the industry groups that have gotten us back on. So thank you for your leadership and involvement. And so, we have a great future. You know, the cruise lines are gonna open. We're gonna get meetings and conventions back. And international, where I'm on the, I share, you know, with Ivis Romero, we both serve on the U.S. Travel Board of Directors. And Roger Dow, our CEO, every day, they're connecting Europe and the EU. We'll get Canada. You know, at any point in time in the past, a third of our visitors were international, maybe representing fifty percent of the tax collections. But bravo today because of our partnerships exceeding nineteen levels without three important legs to the stool. I wanna introduce our team here, Rolando Aitor, our Chief Operating Officer. All the good stuff is because of Rolando's involvement. And Suzie Sponder, all the positive media is because of Suzie. And so, I got to do this. But, you know, this month is National Travel and Tourism Month. And we say here on Sunny Isles Beach, every day is Travel and Tourism Day. We don't need a whole month. And the future is great. I mean, you have the number-one oceanfront resort in the world, Aquilina, in the world. And so, the partnership is great. We work with your visitor center. I guess we're getting new cameras out to show the world in real time what it looks like here on Sunny Isles Beach. But the partnership has never been stronger. The future is very bright. And we just wanna thank you. And we actually have a plaque for you that we're not gonna keep, we're gonna, if we could just have a, if you could, a quick picture?
Well, and we would be remiss if we didn't have a piece of glass for Bill, too. So we have a, we have an "It's So Bill: Reimagining Retirement." What is that, a decanter? Is that what that is?
You know, look at that, I'm shy. That's a... Oh, my God.
So, okay.
This is a, this is a, nobody tells me about this stuff. I just show up. So that's wonderful. It's about the team effort. Team effort, team win. And we have a saying at the Bureau, "Family first." Team effort, team win, family first.
Mayor, I love your hair, bud.
Silver, silver.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Rolando, thanks, everyone. Appreciate it. Absolutely. Okay, we'll move on to Item 5B, which is our audit report for fiscal year 1920. Ms. Tiffany?
Yes, Honorable Mayor and Commissioner. We've completed our 2020 audit. And we have our audit firm, Ms. L, here. Eddie Castaneda is an audit manager. And he's gonna deliver a brief presentation about the audit and answer any questions that you may have.
Eddie Castaneda sounds more like a trumpet player than an auditor, you know? So it's Eddie Castaneda and his orchestra. It's got a nice ring to it, so, yeah.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. Mayor. As Tiffany said, today we're gonna present the audit results of the September 30th, 2020 audits. Before I get into it, I just wanna thank, a lot of hard work goes into producing this document, so I wanna thank the city manager and his office, and as well as Tiffany Neely and her office. We couldn't do it without her. As you know, or and should know, that your external auditor answers to the commission. But we can't do our job efficiently without the cooperation of city management. So thank you both for your help. Do I have a clicker? So at the end of our audit, we are bound by our auditing standards to give required communications to those charged with governance, which is the commission. You should have received a letter outlining all these points here, our auditor responsibilities, that the audit was conducted in accordance with governmental auditing standards as well as United States generally accepted accounting practices. Those are our management's responsibilities. And they sign a management representation that they've given us access to everything that we've asked for, that they haven't withheld information. And those representations have been given to us. Internal controls and compliance, significant matters, and the assigned individual for oversight, all of that is detailed in the letter that you were given. So our deliverables are our audit report. The city did receive an unmodified opinion, which is the quote-unquote "clean" opinion, which basically states that the financial statements were free and material misstatements. Also, our audit, our internal control, we are to assess the city's internal control over financial reporting. And we're happy to note that we have no findings to relate to you. Some, the Florida Auditor General also requires two additional reports, the independent accountant's report as well as the auditor's management letter. No comments in the management letter. And that independent accountant's report is related to the city's compliance of its investments in accordance to Florida statutes. No findings there, and we feel that the city is in compliance with those statutes. Some financial highlights for you to go over. This is for the general fund, which is the operating fund for the city. Just two things to note here. There was an increase in your general fund's fund balance of approximately five million, which is very healthy. And that number for your unassigned fund balance, which is approximately twenty-nine million, which represents approximately ninety percent of the overall city's expenditures in a given fiscal year. So that is a very healthy unassigned fund balance. And quite frankly, one of the top ones in the state. So you can be proud of that. Some general fund budget highlights. The budget came in, the city actually did approximately five million under budget for the year. That is related mostly to unfilled vacancies and savings of payroll expenditures and its related payroll expenses. The proprietary fund, which is the city's stormwater fund, has been, for the past few years, has been approximately pretty stable. Operating revenues of approximately a million and expenditures just under that. And that's been kind of the trend for the past few years. And other than that, if you have any questions or comments, those are the results.
So you said clean management letter, no comments in the management letter?
No comments in the management.
Okay, that's wonderful. Okay, great. Okay, any questions or comments from the commission?
I just have a quick question. How many cities do you complete audits for in Florida?
In the firm, our firm?
Yes.
We currently audit nine of the top one hundred cities in the state. But within our group, wow, I'd have to say anywhere between ten to twenty in the current given year.
Great. Any other questions or comments? Okay. Tiffany, hats off to you and your staff. Doesn't get better than this. So, do we need, this is just a presentation, so do we need a motion to accept the report? No? Okay. Thank you for coming, and we appreciate the presentation. And great, great job to the finance department. 6A was deferred. We move on to Item 7A. Ordinances for First Reading.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, creating Article 4 Camping Prohibited of Chapter 99 Public Health and Safety of the Court of Ordinances of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, providing for legislative intent, providing for definitions, providing that camping is prohibited on any public place within the city unless otherwise authorized, providing for evidence of camping, providing for enforcement and penalties, providing for severability, providing for conflicts, and providing for an effective date. This is first reading.
Yeah, this one seems self-evident, but I guess not, Stan. Go ahead.
Yes, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the commission. This ordinance is in response to some issues we've been having in our parks and the pier. It's an enforcement tool, and it's strictly relegated to public property.
Okay, understood. Any questions regarding this proposed ordinance? I think, like I said, I think it's pretty self-evident. You know, I think if you go to California, you know, they should be adopting some of the same things, but, okay. Okay, I hear a motion by Commissioner Goldman. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Viscara. I believe this is a roll call. I mean, a, yeah, roll call.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sfetchen?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
The ordinance passes on first reading. Second reading will be scheduled for July 15.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Stan. Item 7B?
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 14 of the city's Court of Ordinances titled Court Enforcement to Amend Section 14-17, titled Abatement by the City Recovery of Costs and Expenses, lean to provide that the presence of yard waste or miscellaneous debris on private property that is capable of becoming airborne shall constitute an immediate threat to public health, safety, and welfare upon the issuance of a severe weather advisory, which condition will be subject to summary abatement, providing for definition, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing for inclusion in the city code, providing for an effective date. This is first reading.
Stan?
Mayor, we're in the middle of hurricane season now. There's something brewing out there as we speak. Inevitably, every year we get calls because somebody puts some debris out the day before a storm is going to hit. This ordinance provides us with the ability to go in, notify, but also to remedy the violation and therefore clearing a serious potential threat to health, safety, and welfare.
Right. Okay. Yeah, because right now, we don't have the authority to go in and actually remove somebody's debris off their property, correct?
Correct.
Yeah. Okay. Again, self-evident. Very good. Any questions from the commission?
No, I just, I think it's great. I mean, debris is one of the great problems, great issues of casualty and destruction in a storm event.
Absolutely.
And I think it's a great tool for the toolkit, and I completely agree and applaud it.
Good. Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Some move.
Okay, okay. Vice, I'm sorry?
Public.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Any comments from the public? I shouldn't have asked.
There's none.
There are none. Okay, thank you. It reminded me. See, I think I'm on Zoom. See, I'm getting, I'm getting ahead of myself, you know? Okay.
Wave their hand, you know?
Public hearings, sorry. You know, Ari always has something to say. Geez, Ari, you know, you're disappointing us. Okay. So I have a motion from the Vice Mayor. I have a second from Commissioner Goldman. Mauricio?
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sfetchen?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
The ordinance passes on first reading. Second reading will be on July 15.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Stan. Okay. Ordinance for Second Reading. We'll move on to Item 9A.
An ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, amending Chapter 156 of the City of Sunny Isles Beach Court of Ordinances entitled Fees Miscellaneous: Repealing and Replacing Attachment A entitled City of Sunny Isles Beach Building Department Fee Schedule with the revised fee schedule attached as attachment A, eliminating the chief building official's authority to administratively waive the applicable building department permit fees for construction or improvements to city-owned property or projects located in the city, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date in the second and final reading.
Clay, you're not in the car.
I'm not in the car. Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, this ordinance in the second reading has, does not have any changes. It says it was read in the car. It's a pleasure to be here tonight.
It's good to see you.
And I'm open for any questions. Our recommendation is to approve the ordinance.
Yeah. I think you did a great job. So, any questions from the commission?
Yes, just don't spend it all in one place, right?
There you go. Yeah. So, okay, I think we, no, but I think we did the public justice here for the average person. I've always said, if it, if it costs too much to comply, everybody wants to cheat. So I think you really did a good job of kind of, you know, balancing out the low end and, you know, making sure the high end's competitive, so, okay.
Thanks to everybody.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Thanks to you and your team.
My only comment on this, as we said before, is now let's make sure that people know about it so that the compliance happens.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because otherwise, we get stuck with the same assumptions.
Absolutely.
Great, great point. Great point.
Good. So, okay. Can I hear a motion?
Some move.
Wait.
Okay. Oh, sorry, public opinion. Okay. So public, is there any public comments?
None, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, Vice Mayor, do I hear a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Lama. Mauricio?
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sfetchen?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
The ordinance passes.
See, I think we're all a little punchy tonight, because I think we're used to sitting in our shorts and our jacket and shirts. See, that's what's really going on here, exactly. I didn't say underwear. I said our shorts, just for the record, you know? Okay, Item 9B.
9B is an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Sunny Isles Beach, Florida, amending Sections 108-9 Permit Required and 108-10 Permit Conditions of Chapter 108 of the City of Sunny Isles Beach Court of Ordinances entitled Beaches to increase the permit application fee, provided that the placement of beach chairs and equipment shall be pursuant to the beach chair presetting diagram issued by the city as a condition of permit approval. Amending Section 108-13 Penalties for Offenses to provide for increased penalties for violations, including suspension of a permit upon a third violation, providing that owners shall not be entitled to any refund of the permit fee as a result of a permit suspension, providing for an appeal process for any decisions related to the suspension or denial of a permit, providing for repealer, providing for severability, providing for codification, providing for an effective date in the second and final reading.
Claudia?
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. This second reading is, as Mauricio wrote, to modify the permit requirements, conditions, and to give us more tools and opportunities to enforce the beach chairs with Commissioner Viscara's modification as per the first reading.
Much better than that microphone she would use on the Zoom calls, wouldn't you say?
I have tried so many mics.
I know, I know you did. I know, you must have had four different sets of headphones, you know, so, yeah.
I'm glad to be here, too.
Okay, very good. Any, any public comments on this one?
We do, Mayor, one. This comes from Patrick Dunn, addresses 317-191 Terrace. And his comment is, as our population grows, the availability of our beach and great public resource has decreased. So I'm grateful that an ordinance has been put forth that will provide some teeth to an infraction that developers have blatantly violated with little recourse. Thank you, Vice Mayor Sfetchen, Commissioner Goldman, for taking interest in my calls. Please enforce the aforementioned infraction, and we dedicate ourselves to the principle that the beaches belong to everyone and can be owned by no one.
Okay, I think we could put Patrick in charge of enforcement. Stan, you would have, you know, you could lay off half your staff, you know, so...
He's offered.
He's offered, I'm sure. I'm sure. Thank you, Patrick, if you're out there watching. So, any, any comments regarding this ordinance from the commission? Okay. Do I hear a motion? I hear a motion from the Vice Mayor. Do I hear a second? Second by Commissioner Lama. Mauricio?
Vice Mayor Sfetchen?
Yes.
Commissioner Goldman?
Yes.
Commissioner Lama?
Yes.
Commissioner Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Shaw?
Yes.
The ordinance is adopted.
Excellent. Thank you, Claudia. Thank you. And thanks again, Patrick. Okay, we move on to resolutions. And first one is Item 10A.
10A is a resolution approving a second amendment to the agreement with FBI Security Services to provide a customer service ambassador for the Pier Park parking lot.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Commission. We have an agreement in place with FBI Security Services. They provide a parking attendant at Pier Park parking lot. We've had that agreement for two years. So this is requesting approval for an amendment to renew, for that first option to renew.
Got it. Chris, what's the status of the lot with the DOT and the potential shifting of that, getting that parking out of there?
Well, we're very close on that. But we also have a new proposal from the Newport and La Perla on the, it's different.
Okay, that'll come up to us, though.
But we're listening to, yeah.
That'll come to us. Okay, good, good. That's what I wanted to know. Because I don't want this to be an evergreen thing, if we can avoid it, so... Okay. Any comments from the public, Mauricio?
None, Mayor.
None. Any comments from the commission?
No.
Pretty cut and dry. Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Some move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sylvia. Item 10B?
10B is a resolution approving a fourth amendment to the agreement with Martin &amp; Sons Residential Services for pressure cleaning services.
Honorable Mayor and Commission, this is for an amendment to our agreement with Martin &amp; Sons. We use them annually for pressure cleaning services, sidewalks throughout the city, as well as pavers in our various park locations.
Okay. Any comments from the public?
Nope.
None? Any questions from the commission? Hearing none. Do I hear a motion?
Some move.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sylvia. Item 10C?
10C is a resolution approving the expenditure of budgeted funds with Toshiba Business Solutions for a four-year lease of one photocopier.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commission. This is for a four-year lease agreement with Toshiba for a multi-function copier that will be used at Gateway Center.
Excellent. Okay. Any comments from the public?
None, Mayor.
None? Any comments from the commission? Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. See ya. Thank you. Item 10D?
10D is a resolution ratifying change order number 31 relating to the agreement with Roel Global Networks LP for the Collins Avenue Utilities Underground Project, extending the project completion date by an additional 184 days.
Chris?
This is strictly a time extension. And it's primarily because of just delays that FP and L have had in the wiring up of Phase 1 and 2, which they're just about done on, ready to start on 3. And there's still about twenty street lights and issues with regard to the bases and their location.
Okay, so there's twenty lights left to go, is what you're saying?
About, yeah.
About twenty? Okay. We should have like a leaderboard up in the, maybe in the lobby. Okay.
We're getting there.
Okay, great. Do we have an ETA on the twenty?
No. No, there's about twelve of them are really problematic.
Twelve of them, okay. Okay. Any comments from the public? No, man. No? Okay, that's okay. Any questions from the commission?
It's not a money vote, so...
Not a money vote. Yeah, kind of. Yeah, it isn't, it isn't. Yeah. I always say, when you're doing construction contracts, scheduling and change orders, those are the two things you gotta watch. Okay, do I hear a motion approved?
Some move.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay. Um, item ten E.
Ten E is a resolution approving a special construction agreement with Bell South Telecommunications Doing Business as AT&amp;T for phase three of the undergrounding project.
Great.
It's me. I'm the local mayor.
I'm looking around at this season.
Um, this is actually, um, it, the work already happened. It's AT&amp;T. They had not billed us for the design for the underground from one seven five to one eight three.
Okay, great. Um, any public comments?
No, mayor.
None? Any questions from the commission? None? Good. I'm glad when we, when we're getting these bills, cause that means that the, that the, that the wiring's going in, you know, so.
I do have one, one comment from the public.
Okay, shoot.
Please bring your microphones closer. Nobody can hear you. Sorry.
Okay. I thought I was eating mine. Okay. All in, um, do I hear a motion approved?
So moved.
So moved. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Item ten F.
A resolution granting an easement to Florida Power and Light to allow for the undergrounding of overhead wires located across the property on Collins Avenue and one hundred and eighty-sixth Street.
Okay, this is an easement that we're granting to FP and L for the conduit that travels across the corner house property, which we own now, um, that powers, uh, the entire area that is Navarro's right now.
Okay. Um, any comments from the public?
Nope.
None? Any comments from the commission?
No.
None. Lot of housekeeping tonight. Okay. Do I hear a motion approved?
So moved.
Do I hear a second? Second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item ten G.
Resolution approving a second amendment to the agreement with Ronald L. Book for professional legislative relations and lobbying services.
Boy, we're not getting the, the annual, um, you know, the annual, like revival from Ron, you know? I feel like it's the Tallahassee revival when Ron comes, you know?
I know. Boy, he hasn't had good news to send us.
Yeah, I guess, I guess.
The governor's vetoed. They worked hard.
I guess the collection dish hasn't been getting him.
In the past two years, a million and a half dollars has been vetoed.
Really?
Once they worked hard to get it approved through the senate, through the house, and, um, and then to be, uh, to be, uh, vetoed.
I've always said with Ron, you don't want him swinging against you. You know, that's the main thing, you know? When he's swinging for you, so.
So there's been no changes. There's been changes a number of years. The total amount is seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars.
Any comments from the public, Mauricio?
No, mayor.
None? Any comments from the commission? Okay. Um, do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Item ten H.
Ten H is a resolution ratifying determination of a local emergency issued on May twenty-six, twenty twenty-one due to COVID nineteen pandemic.
Oh, boy.
Pretty self-explanatory.
Yeah, thank goodness.
Extinguish the emergency order.
Okay. As most people know, we gave, the, the, the manager had, um, had, um, additional authority during the pandemic, um, for a variety of reasons. And it's just like when we don't come in, in August, it's the same type of thing. We give the manager additional authority. Um, so, um, do we have any comments from the public?
No, mayor.
None? Any comments from the commission? Okay. I hear a motion from the vice mayor? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, ten I.
Ten I is a resolution adopting the City of Sunny Isles Beach Sustainable Procurement Policy.
Commissioner Goldman?
Okay, so we had it in our last meeting. We had a little discussion item, and I wanna just, um, uh, really shout out to Evelyn Trammell. Uh, I think that's your last name? Or you changed it?
I was.
Uh, sorry, old habits die hard. Uh, I wanna just really commend Evelyn for what really is an outstanding job in articulating in a coherent and succinct and a very impactful and a meaningful way, you know, what is, what is our sustainable procurement policy. And I wanna also commend, uh, this, this, really the elegant drafting of this resolution. I'd like to just read a couple of the recitals. I won't be too much, but I wanna say what a great job in, you know, bringing our e-committed program and our practice and our philosophy forward and taking the next step in the right direction and really, it really is, again, a, a value system or a core value of our city. And again, for us to be good stewards, uh, as other, as others have before us and hopefully others will follow. So whereas the city staff has developed the City of Sunny Isles Beach Sustainable Procurement Policy, the purpose of which is to incorporate criteria into the city's procurement process that promote the protection of the environment, economic development, and social equity. And whereas pursuant to the policy, the city's purchasing administrator will provide the city departments and contractors and our suppliers with clear and consistent instructions on how to consider and make purchases of supplies, services, and capital projects which comply with the policy when feasible. And then prior to the purchase order approval, the administrator will ensure that departments have used due diligence. And this policy does not replace our purchasing code, but it supplements the purchasing code with environmental, economic development, and social considerations applicable to purchaser, purchases, and contracts when feasible. And this will play a critical role in furtherance of our e-committed campaign and committed to promoting and fostering eco-friendly and eco-driven adjustments that everyone can make in their daily lives to help protect the environment. And, uh, as, as an, as an add-on or, or another component to this, I'd like to really introduce and take actually a, a page from the mayor's playbook that he did, uh, many years ago with the, um, the IT challenge. Um, I issue a challenge, uh, on behalf of the city for all of our departments to really, uh, uh, get into this, uh, challenge and hopefully a, a little, uh, friendly competition about how each department can further this sustainability policy and practice and procedure. So hopefully we'll have all the departments, uh, get involved, building code, uh, purchasing and so forth, to say, how could we all, uh, really, uh, further this and really, uh, support this, uh, policy? So that's, that's a, a great vision for, for, for us, for the present and the future. And Evelyn, I didn't know if you wanted to talk a little bit about this. Uh, she did a wonderful job of, of putting together the procurement policy and, uh, really just, again, very well articulated.
Thank you so much. Um, good evening, honorable mayor and commissioners. Um, you know, I just would like to echo, um, some of what Commissioner Goldman mentioned. The sustainable procurement policy, it's something that reflects the city's ongoing commitment to sustainability and its, and its adoption and its implementation. It's something, it plays an important role in the furtherance of our e-committed campaign, and it also supports the vision that has been outlined in our adopted, um, comprehensive plan. And it's meant to, um, just complement, um, the already existing purchasing code.
Thank you. Excellent, excellent.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to have Tiffany come up for just a moment on this item.
Okay, sure. Sure.
Since we're talking about the sustainable procurement policy, I wanted to.
You've done away with all the paper and finance. Is that, is that it?
I wish. No.
Okay, okay. I was just checking.
I wish. I certainly wish that. Um, but I wanted to introduce our new purchasing administrator, Najali Bold.
Okay. Najali.
Oh, yes.
All right. But the pressure's on Najali. You can feel it already, you know, so. All right. Thank you. Thanks, Tiffany. Okay. Um, any comments from the public on this one, Mauricio?
No, mayor.
None? Any, any additional comments from the commission? Okay. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay, that's it for our agenda items. I've, I'm gonna slide one in, okay? Um, which, which I always say we shouldn't do, and I'm gonna do this one because, so Gateway Park is basically finished, which is fantastic. And we obviously haven't opened it yet because of the COVID issues, um, surrounding it, but, but we're on the verge of, you know, having our big launch. Um, I think we would be, um, very remiss not to, um, not to, not to recognize Roz Bresen, who's, you know, our former commissioner, um, who, um, who was really a champion of Gateway Park. I mean, you know, um, what, what, Roz died at, what, eighty-eight was she? How old was she? Was she?
Ninety.
She was ninety. Roz had game up until the day she died. I can tell you. Roz would, Roz would get me and work me over like I, like, like nobody's business, I can tell you. So I had such tremendous respect for Roz. And, um, and so, um, so, you know, it's been proposed that we name the lounge after Roz. It's called the Roz Bresen Senior Lounge. And so, um, I think I just wanted to give Susan kind of the ability that we actually have a little vote on that. And so Susan's, Susan's got the, um, you know, so, so Susan's got our marching orders as far as that's concerned.
Um, I think that when we, uh, Chris and I spoke about that months ago, um, really I was a big, I was an early, a proponent and adopter of that. So I strongly, strongly support that. I think she was a great champion of the seniors. And, um, I would just, it would be an, an honor to really, and a privilege and an honor to honor her memory because of all of her advocacy on behalf of the seniors. And I think it's very right and very fitting to do this. So.
Great.
As you know, I've been a bit, you know.
Absolutely.
Definitely on, I've been on the same page since day one about that.
That's great. Um, okay. So, um, any other comments from the commission? Let, let's have a formal vote. So do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Susan? Okay. Okay. Roz, we're thinking about you. We know you're up there. Okay. Um, item twelve A. Um, Commissioner Lama wanted to talk about security measures and police department visibility. Alex?
So, um, this pretty much came about, uh, a few weeks ago when, when there was the flare-up in Gaza. You know, uh, Chris, our police department and myself, we had a meeting with, with a local rabbi and the president of the synagogue. And obviously the, you know, there was concern with all the antisemitism going on and the, uh, and the attacks and intimidation in, in, in the country and some of our neighbors, neighboring municipalities, unfortunately. So, you know, um, I kept on thinking, you know, what, what we could do, you know, and, uh, also, how can we have a deterrence, you know? So I was looking and thinking, you know, perhaps of, um, looking at the Tony Roma's building and considering it as maybe our police department. I know there's been talk about having our, uh, building department there, but I think it'll be good if we have that visibility there, or at least consider it, you know? Open it up for discussion, discuss it with our police department. And, um, I think it'll be good deterrence, you know, from theft, from speeding. Obviously, we have speeding, uh, issues here around that area especially, and then the south. But I think the location of it, uh, will be, uh, a good location to kind of, uh, deter speeders, uh, coming through the city. Also, aside from the antisemitism and, and other issues, I think we have a, such an influx of, of people coming in from, from around the country and around the world. Um, another unfortunate event or, uh, events is all the shootings that have been happening. And we're, we're, we're well, uh, are aware of that. Unfortunately, it, uh, happened to one of our own, uh, people. And, uh, I just wanted to open that for discussion and perhaps look at the visibility, analyze it, and have a discussion with our police department regarding that.
So, so Alex, why, why don't we let Chris open?
I'd like to comment on that.
Yeah, yeah, let's let staff open since it's a kind of a facilities decision. So, Chris, Chris, so we, so just so we understand kind of the, what, what the ground rules might be here. So, I'm assuming you talked to Chris about it already?
No, no, no. So, so, uh, just to backtrack a little bit, I talked to Chris about it.
Okay.
Uh, we went back and forth a little bit. He told me he had some, some plans as well to increase police presence, uh, and the visibility. So act as a deterrent. So, Chris, you could, you could go ahead and, and talk to that subject a little bit.
Well, th- those are, um, as you just, I don't expect that anybody has had time to even look at this, but we did distribute with you the, um, security studies that have been done on our three main facilities. And, uh, that's where we, we, before COVID, we had started to, uh, deal with exactly that issue. And I think, um, we will, uh, because this is not public information in terms of the reports, um, we will get back on that and the police issue will be the first item.
I, I'd like to comment on that. Um, I think it's a wonderful idea. I think that, um, we really should have a, a marquee and a visible pe- police presence. And I'd like to see, really, if, if we are gonna convert the Tony Roma space, I think it's, it's really a better idea to use, to put the police department than, you know, necessarily the building department. I think it's, sends the right message. I think it's, uh, it is really important. I think it's very hard when the, when the public comes in. It's very hard to find, you know, the police department. And, and certainly in our budget, in our theoretical budget workshop, workshop, uh, you know, at least I advocated for increased, uh, police presence and budgeting and so forth. And I actually think it's a great idea. So I, I, I commend that, uh, concept. I'd like to see, you know, maybe some, some thought put into, you know, uh, you know, the best utilization of that space.
Vice mayor?
I just wanted to, to say, um, um, I actually had the same idea, Alex, when, when Tony Roma's closed. And Chris and I talked about it. And, uh, you know, there were some numbers thrown around about how much it would cost to, to make that a police station. That was, at, at least at that time, was somewhat cost prohibitive. And I agree with Commissioner Goldman. I think we all, um, wanted to see more, uh, police presence as far as actual, you know, bodies on the street. But I think that there's other ways to, to really highlight where our police is. So, uh, because it's a discussion item, I'm still not decided on it. But, you know, there's ways to put up signage. There's, there's different ways of doing it. And as I understand, we're also, we are, uh, doing construction on the lobby, which is going to allow people to come in. Is that correct, Chris, what we talked about?
Well, that, that, that is the intent, to be able to access every department from our main lobby now. And again, it's something that, um, you know, that, um, has been, you know, has been addressed, and now we're getting back on it again.
Right, exactly.
It took a delay. You, you all have received the reports now.
Yes.
And, um, uh, you know, I would just say, take, take, take a look at it.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah. I, I think it's something to, to, to consider, uh, analyze it and perhaps get some, some number go, going. I know you mentioned, uh, numbers. I, I, I haven't seen those numbers, but maybe do a comparison and, and, and look at the benefits and the pros and the cons, basically. So, uh, I would like us to, to perhaps consider that. Obviously, we need to talk to our PD department. Uh, sorry.
No, no, that's all right. That's all right. No, I, I, I think as, as a, you know, just as, as an idea, as, as being, being kicked around right now, I, I really like the idea. Um, and I, I see it as a, um, part of that growing up process, right? We used to be on top of the Payless store. Then we got the second floor over here. And then the next natural progression is like to have its own building that's truly accessible. I'll tell you, I, I locked myself out of the building today. I went downstairs to, uh, to mail a letter, but I didn't have this with me. I didn't have anything. The building was closed. And so the only way that I could get up there, if I'm a pedestrian looking for, for the police and it's a Saturday, you know, one AM, the only way you're gonna get up there is if you have, you have to know to walk up the ramp, uh, of, of, of a garage. Uh, it's, you, you know, it's, it's not the most ideal. It was good. It's, it's better than the Payless. It's good. But why not look at something like this as the next big step? And we just got our numbers, you know? Look good. So we may have some money. Uh, and, and even if we don't, it may be a good investment. I know that this is, you know, I'm not an architect. There's, there's probably a lot of conversations to be had, but I think as a concept, it's a very good one. I like it.
So, um, I'm kind of a data guy. I mean, so I, I, I think, I think fundamentally it's a good thought, but I think, um, I'd like to understand, um, cause it's a facilities decision at the end of the day, but, but, but it's, but it's also a public access decision. So I understand where you're coming from. But I, I'd like to understand, and I'm sure the police has the stats, how many people actually walk up to the police department every day? I don't know. I don't know how many people walk into the police department every day versus how many people go into the construction department every day, you know?
Yeah, I'd like to understand that.
It's probably a big swing. And there may be other ways to mitigate it, but I agree with you on the visibility.
Yeah, we need it.
I think you're dead on. I think the visibility is on, you know, and I think it's very, to Jennifer's point, I think it's very clunky. Trying to figure out, you know, where the police department is right now. But my point is there may be different ways to skin the cat, but I'd also like to see, you know, like, you know, I mean, if it's if if not that many people. Walk into the police department on a daily basis, um, the visibility could be achieved in other ways. You know, we could maybe maybe still still achieve, you know, you know.
It's not just foot traffic. It's it's other things, right? I mean, you can't just, you that to me is not the only metric by which you.
I didn't say it was. I just said I'd like to see some data.
Right, but I just think there are other metrics besides just, you know, foot traffic and clearly we can expand the the building department. They can have basically two floors. If the police moves out of that, then they literally have the space that they need.
Yeah, and I'm not I'm not saying that it's it's to the detriment of the building department. All I'm saying is is that um. It's a good idea, but I'd like to see some data surrounding, um, you know, what I have no idea how many people walk in there on a daily basis.
Let me just ask you this. Is it um, is it, isn't it within the the province of the commission to make that decision? I mean, if we wanna. You're saying it's a facilities management decision, but is couldn't the commission basically?
It's in the province of the commission to do anything, because the city manager works for us.
Okay.
So but the fact is, there's some things that I think, um, although we may think that we have knowledge about something. Um, we, but that's why I'd like to see it vetted. I I'm I'm not questioning our ability to direct the manager. I never said that. I just said I'd like to see some data because it's a discussion item. So, but it's a clearly it's in our province to do anything we want, so.
Okay.
So that's a given. So, um, but I think it's a good idea, Alex, is the point. And and all I'm saying is is that, you know, um, let let's really. Let's let's really grind down on it.
Let's let's look at it. Let's do an analysis and cost and pros and cons and 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 compare.
Yeah, so that'd be great. So, okay, Chris, I think you got your marching orders. Um, okay.
Thank you.
Um, this is a quick meeting tonight. Public comments? Okay, public comments. I'm sorry. Oh, boy, it's we're not on Zoom. I don't I don't have somebody, you know, raising their hand and. Hidden chat.
Just three, just three quick comments.
Go ahead.
Uh, the first one comes from John DeJardine is addresses two fifty one eighty first drive. And it says car mufflers are allowed to be far too noisy now. Can't the police crack down on these noise makers? Many of them have ordinary sedans that have been retrofitted to be obnoxiously noisy. What are what are what is the city doing about this?
Good question.
We've only brought it up about every other meeting.
Trying, I'm trying.
Been trying, so, okay. Next one, Mauricio.
Next one is from Patrick Dunn, three seventeen one ninety first terrace. While we cannot simply reverse an engineer years of reckless profit-driven beach development, we must take steps to prevent private interest from influencing lawmakers in the future. If last week's hearing taught us anything, it's some official, some officials had kowtowed to developers. Recently, it's been brought to my attention the staging area for chairs and umbrellas of these beachfront monstrosities may be modified. I'd like for my commission to consider a joint public panel allowing residents to have a say in the upcoming proposed beach modifications. Of course, I'd gladly volunteer for a seat at the table.
Thank you. Next one.
Next one is from John DeJardine again, two fifty one eighty first drive. Um, it says, what is this, what are the city's plans for a car rental for the car rental site? Are you still going forward with the school expansion after monitoring car licenses?
No. So, that's a short answer. So, right now, right now, um. There's not been any movement on the school development site for a variety of reasons, not the least of which is the school board still. Does not seem to want to get their arms around the district jumper issue. And we feel that if we if we significantly contributed to that to that site and built another school, we would basically be. Be funding um a lot of a lot of um out of district um participants in that school. So it's it's unfortunate, and I personally met with the superintendent and I personally, you know, brought the. Brought the attention. It was my idea to do the car, the the car license plate analysis and unfortunately, it's never really gone anywhere, so. Um, but we I think the whole commission probably feels the same. We would we would be very remiss. Spending the amount of taxpayer dollars on that school without a solution or a mitigating. Uh, or 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 some serious mitigation to the district jumper issue. So, that so, you know, to answer your question, thanks for asking, John. Um, right now, it's 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 cold, so there's nothing there. Okay. Um, this is probably a record meeting. Not bad for the first for for the first post Zoom, you know? Okay, thank you everyone for coming. Appreciate it. Um, motion to adjourn. So, thank you.